I'm in.
Who we got here, hey guys?
You alright?
Alright, hang on. Michael Yad.
You okay?
Yeah, well, thank you. Hmm?
If you have six, you need four.
Trying to get it.
I see him here, I'm just waiting for him.
Get him.
There you are, Michael.
Michael Albertson. Get out of here.
Michelle.
All set? Michael, can you hear us? One second. Got you. Two words, sounds like.
I had one of these after West End a couple weeks ago.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, Michael.
Perfect.
Okay, he's... Rich, good.
Alright.
Oh, all the way.
Hey, but I don't have any audio. Just connecting, Rich.
Alright, whoever it is.
It's on mute. Damn.
Put it in about two seconds here. Whatever you want. Whatever you want. I'm good. Alright, Tom. Alright, shall we?
You're on.
We're on. Alright, everybody, welcome. This is December 2nd, 2020, special meeting of the Smithfield Township Planning Commission. We'll call it to order here at about 5:00 after 3:00. And, uh... First and foremost, before we do that, let's say the pledge of the flag and then I'll do the rest. Alright, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Let me see the audio, come on.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, before I get started, I can't see whoever, I don't know who this one is up here. Alright, Terry, you're coming through on the audio, so I need you to just either mute yourself or not say anything while we get started here, okay? Good. Alright, members present today, we have, uh, David Strunk.
Hey, what am I doing wrong? I can't hear anybody.
Uh, unmuted, Terry.
I did.
Uh, the little orange thing on the computer, is that unmuted? Is there an orange light on the computer, on the keys on the top?
No.
No?
Turn that off?
You check the volume, Terry?
Oh wait, they just turned it on.
Can you... Can you send Terry Teal a message to say to stop talking, please?
Okay, I'll stop talking, thank you.
There we go, now you heard me. Good, okay, thanks, Terry. Alright. Okay, um, this is in the matter of, um, the Water Gap Rehabilitation Center. I think I said, we have the members present, we've got Michael Albera online, Doug Scriber, Dave Strunk, and me, your illustrious chairman here, so we do have a quorum. Now, from my understanding, you know, a little bit of, uh, a little bit of pre-work here, I'm gonna, uh, talk with our solicitor, Ron Karasak. Alright, Ron, specifically, let's, let's at least get it so everybody can hear. What it is, we are supposed to be reviewing, 'cause it seems like we've been through this any number of times, so...
You, you, you have been
Yeah.
through this a number of times. And what you are doing is you are reviewing a application for conditional use
Yes.
that has been filed pursuant to the landowner curative zoning amendment that was approved by the township by written decision of September 22, 2020. Uh, that curative amendment basically says that you can have a private residential drug alcohol, uh, and substance abuse treatment center in the R-1 low-density residential zone, provided it is, uh, determined or provided it, it, it secures a conditional use permit from the township. So, that's where we are now. Now, you did review this matter thoroughly back at your planning commission of October 30 of 2019.
Yeah, that's this one.
And in your packet... Hold on for one second to see if Dave has. That's the supervisor's packet. Give me one moment. Yeah, we're sorry, thank you, that's okay. In your packet, you will have a copy of the 2019 township engineer review letter, the four or five pages of comprehensive notes of your planning commission meeting on October 30 of 2019. So that what you have here is essentially that same application as you had last year, except that there are three additional items that were not on last year's application.
Yes.
And that is based upon the zoning amendment that was adopted.
Yes.
The property must have 25 acres minimum.
Right.
That the treatment must all be done on-site.
Okay.
And that you can have no more than 60 individuals, uh, in, in the program.
Okay.
Now, you didn't have those three items last time, but other than that, this is exactly the same application as before, so I don't mean to stifle Mr. Wolf, and I don't mean to stifle the residents, etc., but I don't necessarily know if you, meaning the planning commission, need to reinvent the wheel here. It's up to you to decide what you want to hear, how much you want to hear, so that you can then make a recommendation, uh, before the meeting of the supervisors that will be occurring at four.
Yeah, that's gonna be occurring as soon as we're done.
Can someone please remind us how we voted last time?
Give me a moment, I have to look at those notes. Alright. It's in the meeting minutes, right?
'Cause I think we fell in a procedural niche, actually.
Right.
Quagmire, one might even say.
Yeah, I'm not positive that we actually voted it one way, but... We didn't. Okay.
No, what happened was, we were going to then do it at the next meeting, and in the, and in between
There was a stay.
the matter that stayed by the court of common pleas.
There, there, if you look at the meeting, the meeting minute notes of October 30 on page 6, it will indicate that there was gonna be action taken
Yes.
for a recommendation at the meeting of November 6,
Yep.
2019. However, then, at that point, the objectors and/or protestors filed a motion to stay proceeding on the conditional use, so you never then made a recommendation, but in, in theory, not even in theory, but in practice, you did review this matter thoroughly, the only thing you didn't do was make a recommendation.
Yeah, we had all the discussion, well, like, a couple hours, if I remember right.
Changes of the planning commission notes with respect to this project.
Yeah.
I interrupt you a second. I, I have different notes from that, that's probably the reason I'm interrupting you.
Okay.
I, I have notes from the November 6, 2019, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, which did take place, and, uh, I, I have a note indicating it was a motion, uh, made by Mr. Strunk, which included, uh, 12 bullet point recommendations to the supervisors.
Well, you, you could be right, they were talking a year ago, so if there are meeting minutes that reflect that, then...
I, I guess my, my point simply is, I think, I think the planning commission, uh, I was with you all up to the point where you said it got, got stayed by the appeal. I think it got as, it got as far as the planning commission review with a motion, uh, which was, uh, approved, which carried. And what didn't happen was the first, uh, conditional use hearing the last time around, that's what got, got stayed.
Ron, I remember that meeting, I was there. Okay, well, then, we should have those notes so they can be shared with the planning commissioners, because...
Agreed, I'd like... I, I don't know if I've seen those. I mean, the minutes, I'd like what I'd like.
I don't remember those. They're certainly not in your packet.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if we wanna take a five-minute break and have Lois make a copy of the, the minutes for us, etc., so then they can be shared.
That would be which, that would be the November 6th?
It would be the November 6th.
Yeah, let's take five minutes, let's see if we have it, 'cause I, I know I don't, in all my...
I know they're not in your package. What's, what's the date of your notes?
November 6, 2019.
Yeah, we don't have that. Alright, so let me go check with Lois and see if they can do that. Yeah, but I know you need it. That was it.
So you remember it too?
Yeah, I do. I do, and I remember David's motion, which was lengthy and detailed.
Yeah, I remember that too, which is what I was, why I was sort of asking, because I didn't see it in the, in the packet, so I'm just... I don't remember seeing the minutes. I remember the conversations, that's where I were in a little bit of a...
One of the salient points of David's, at least the one I remember, was some concern about ingress and egress up the road from, uh, 611. You know, the turning radius and the, and the accessibility of that turn next to the deer head, uh, next, next to the, the end there. Deerhead, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right there was difficulty in getting, you know, sizable fire engines and emergency vehicles around that turn.
That's one of the steepest roads.
And it's a, it was a difficult, uh, proposition to get around that turn, that was the one from...
Probably not a lot different than what would have benefited State of the Country Club, though.
Well, yeah, that's true. That is true.
I mean, they probably had food trucks going in there.
Right.
Pocahontou produce, or...
I think the concern was more for emergency vehicles, I think that was one of your concerns.
Well, there's also residences on that road, so the same issue occurs for them.
Well, that's true. And you, you wanted to change their name, or somebody did.
Yeah, I did recommend that.
You incorporate...
But I was actually brought up by some of the citizens, that they
Yeah, it was.
didn't like that name.
And I think what we... If I recall, there were, there were, it's put out to the participants at that time, which were a lot more pre-COVID days as to, uh, recommendations from the participants.
That's right.
That was, thing was generated, I think, from, from that session.
Right. How do I have all your stuff? I only have COVID... 'Cause that, now that you mention it, I remember having this...
Yeah, I remember it now. You, that's, you were at one of the meetings, but not the others, I think, uh...
Well, is there one meeting I missed?
Yeah.
Actually, it could have been that, it could have been that December one. It could have been hunting, actually, from the think of it, which might be why I don't remember it.
Okay, it... So I'm seeing notes that say that we actually had a meeting on the November 12th, and this item was taken off the agenda. Um...
Okay. Well, we'll see what we have.
So, I don't, I don't believe the November 6th is the right date.
He took it off the agenda for November 12th of this year.
Yeah.
Oh, that, that was this year? Oh, sorry.
So here's the November 20, last year's November 26 hearing canceled because of the stay. It happened in between there.
Yeah, the meetings were, were a week only, week apart.
Yeah, they were close, right.
It was a regular meeting and work session. I agree with Mr. Wolf on the time. The planning commission meeting was before the stay, and the conditional use hearing was after.
Okay. Yeah, alright.
But we never, we never got the conditional use here because of just COVID stay.
Yeah, I grabbed.
You know, I just found, I just found, um, I was not able to attend that meeting, um, but I did send a lengthy email to to Doug and, uh, Strunk, um, with seven points on it, but, um, I don't, I, I wasn't, so I actually wasn't, I didn't attend that meeting, just FYI.
Alright. Well... And wait.
So Penn State finally won again.
Yeah, at least it's there, right? Well, and Pittsburgh's about to play in about their...
Let me copy them and I'll bring away...
Oh, thank you, Ron. Yeah. Well, Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh and Baltimore play in about 10 minutes. On a Wednesday afternoon.
It's a strange year.
It's a strange, it's a strange year, Pete.
Are they playing today?
Yeah, they're in about 10 minutes, literally.
The Ravens?
Yeah. The Steelers and Ravens.
Oh, yeah.
'Cause they got bumped.
The story is, they had to put it on at 3:30 because they didn't, NBC didn't want to interfere with the Christmas lighting.
With, yeah, with the Rockefeller Center Christmas tree lighting.
While, while we're, while we're waiting, um, I wouldn't mind reading the comments that I made at the time. Um, can I do that?
I'll jog some memory, that's a good idea.
Go ahead.
Well, and again, these were comments that I wrote, um, because I was unable to attend, but I think that Doug, you may have read these during the meeting, 'cause I wrote these ahead of the meeting, which I was not able to attend.
I'm sure I have it.
Well, I'll just read it, um, 'cause I don't think any of these have changed. Um, okay, um, I, I said, "I think it warrants being noted that it seems as though some of the commission members, myself included, are not entirely convinced that the supervisors came to the correct conclusion in the adjudication process, effectively adding Drug and Rehab Centers as allowable condition use in R1. That said, the adjudication document is logical. Furthermore, in many ways, discussion on this is somewhat irrelevant." That was me saying basically that, um, um, it, it seems like our hands were, were held here, or, or restrained here. But I said, so I continued, "The supervisors are the elected officials and the planning commission is merely a recommending body. It is my understanding that the current business on the table, a conditional use application, should not be seen as an assessment, appeal, or review of the adjudication process of the supervisors, which is already completed. As such, regardless as to whether the planning commission agrees or disagrees with the adjudication, the planning commission's job is to assume that this use is allowable through conditional use application in an R1, unless I am somehow mistaken, Ron. As such, our job at hand is to make a recommendation on the conditional use application and nothing else." That was point one. Point two, "To that end, as I understand it, conditions may be reasonable if conditions set effectively, if the conditions set effectively make the use impossible, or so burdensome as to effectively be impossible, then it is roundabout and technically illegal way of saying the use is simply not allowed. In other words, if the applicant meets all the requirements established in the ordinance, then the planning commission can only recommend reasonable conditions that would be placed on the applicant." That was point two. Again, this is what I said, not legal.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, number three, "With that said, I would think some of the following could be reasonable conditions. A, a large number of complaints are about safety in a community that otherwise must rely on state police. Some possible conditions by no way exhaustive would be, um, A, 24-hour dedicated security, not nurses, other staff acting as security. B, screening of customers, clients, patients, and those with a violent criminal record cannot be admitted." And again, these were just, um, possible conditions. Uh, another was, another concern was about traffic. I am not sure if a traffic study is necessary, but a few possible conditions could be. There is sufficient room for cars to pull up to the gated entrance and turn around if need be, i.e. a loop, if they are denied entrance. If indeed that is the purpose of the gate, and if not, what is the purpose of the gate? This gate should be placed on Smithfield Township land and provide sufficient distance from the end of the road. Um, and then installation of traffic limitations along mountain road, speed bumps, lights. I'm not sure how this would work, given this is not in Smithfield Township. Um, next, I said, "There are a number of waivers requested. Given the sensitivity and community objection to this facility, it might be prudent to limit the extent and number of waivers granted." And then finally, I said, "As it relates to the road, I believe this is more serious concern that has been discussed. If mountain road is a public road, regardless of whether we presently maintain it, this needs to be considered in depth. Part of the driveway is actually road in Delaware Water Gap Borough, including where the proposed gate would be. This therefore would need to be reviewed by Delaware Water Gap Borough?" question mark. "I would think that putting a gate across a public road is not permissible. Um, I strongly recommend clearly defining whether the road is a road or a driveway. If indeed it is a public road, Smithfield Township has responsibilities for maintenance, plowing. The township needs to consider whether it wants to give up those responsibilities, but also the access that would be lost. Um, finally, whatever the decision around the use, maintenance, access, and ownership of the road driveway, this should be reflected in the placement of the gate and in any setback zoning requirements."
Thanks, Michael.
The conditions will be on page 5. Alright, 5 through...
Now we have the conditions for, we have the conditions then also, Michael, from November 6th. That Dave did.
Yeah. This is kind of stronger than what Michael just said.
Yeah.
And I apologize, gentlemen, 'cause I simply did not remember that that was done.
No, that was two of us.
In my mind, uh, the stay had occurred and there was no recommendation by you, but okay, that's even better, that hopefully maybe could make the matter move along a bit more quickly this evening. But, in any event, there you go.
Okay.
Now it can. Alright.
So I don't, I don't have the conditions, the recommendations you have in place. Do you, is it lengthy? Do you wanna read it, or what, what's...
It's just that one page, Scott, you can...
It's just the one page, yeah, you know what, Michael, I will read it, and it, much of it, much of it is what you were talking about as well. So the recommendations... Um...
Hold on for one second, let me get one second.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, I forgot. Okay, I forget.
Oh, see, I was absent on this one, so I didn't remember. Okay, that was the one I wasn't here. Alright. All set? Okay.
I'm sent, Mr. Chair.
Alright. The, uh, the, the motion of, uh, Dave Strunk, and seconded by Robert Moses at the time, and officially, uh, voted on 4-0 at this particular meeting, uh, was the planning commission votes to approve the conditional use request with the following conditions. That there be a preliminary screening and background checks of proposed residents for violent or sexual abuse crimes. And residents at the facility is voluntary, voluntary and not court mandated. That security for the facility be provided, including monitored cameras, door alarms, and security staff. That the name of the facility be changed, uh, to a neutral name. Yeah, okay. Uh, that the facility obtain within six months its state licenses and maintain those licenses in good standing. That the facility obtain both joint commission accreditation for addiction treatment and joint commission accreditation for rehab facilities. That the township engineer, uh, review the site plan and traffic and stacking at entrance gate issues. The applicant is to file a more detailed site plan to define and delineate property lines for the applicant's property, township, and borough properties, and park property. Full compliance, uh, with the township engineer review letter dated October 17, 2019, or secure approved waivers. The board of supervisors review the application for compliance with zoning ordinance section 511-3E, that being sanitary sewage and access to collector or arterial road issues. The applicant's tra... Traffic engineer to prepare a formal written report, not simply an oral presentation, to establish that the anticipated traffic will not be any different than, or stated another way, same or less with the present uses. Next, any future expansions of the facility, either by way of acreage, buildings, or number of beds, will need further township approval along with other... Along with any other required state approvals. The supervisors to determine how many types... Different types of emergency vehicles will access the site. Uh, next, there is an examination slash test of the existing on-lot sanitary sewage system to assure the system will meet the expected demand. Those were the... Those were the ones. All of which frankly I'm good with.
Me too.
Me too.
And... Yeah, I... I do have... I'm going to say this because, again, it's all go on to the supervisors here when we're done, but, uh, it... Given that there were some changes to the curative amendments, I... I had some additional... Uh, some additional conditions to maybe consider here that we should open for discussion, uh, one being that, uh, a patient stay not to exceed 60 days. That the, uh... I think we have in here the fencing and 24-hour security. That there be onsite professional treatment staff 24/7. Um, and that all treatment, which must be onsite, must involve inpatient treatments, no outpatient... No... No outpatient treatments in the facility. Those would be my four additional that I would add, considering we had the curative amendment and this... And this... Yes.
Why do we care if a patient's there more than 60 days?
Uh, because when you're there more than 90 days, you can be, uh, committed on a section 304, uh, mental health commitment, and those are for 90 days, court ordered.
Okay, well, except this really isn't mental health. It's supposed to be drug and alcohol treatment.
That's true. And I've already seen orders that have come through. Do it, okay?
So you're saying if they're there for 91 days, then they can be committed to a mental health?
No, you... You could be committed to them on an order... On an order of court for up to 90 days to that facility, if they're going to get involved in that.
But don't you agree, uh, Scott, that they... There should be, uh, the addiction components that have to? Otherwise, it just becomes a mental health facility.
I'm trying to keep it from avoiding... To avoid becoming just a mental health facility. Just pardon me, but you know.
You're... And you're saying limited to 60 days, am I right?
Sixty days, yeah. You could do back-to-back 30-day patient drug stays, that's no problem.
What is the typical stay at a facility?
I don't know, actually.
Twenty-eight days.
The 28 to 20.
There was... There was testimony at the very first hearing that, uh, Mr. Schlem indicated that it was, uh, 30 days. But 60 is reasonable.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry, but I have to take the minutes up. What were those for again? Patient stay not to exceed 60 days?
Sixty... Sixty consecutive days, probably.
Sixty consecutive days, and fencing and security, how did you word that?
24/7.
24/7. That's already in here.
I... I don't... I don't know if all of it... I added fencing, but...
The additional... And then the onsite... There has to be somebody that is professional onsite 24/7.
Okay, and then the fourth one was what? I'm sorry.
All treatment at the facility must be for patients who are residents at the facility.
Uh, no, I...
No outpatient.
Yes.
Not logical. Which I think is what they're planning to do anyway, onsite anyway. But those would be... Those would be the four additional conditions to the ones that, uh, this board adopted November 6th, 2019. Those are my...
Uh, I have one question. Since the board already... Since the board already... Or the board, since the planning commission already adopted those initial recommendations, do we have to recommend them again, or do we just...
Yes, it's a new curative amendment. It's a new... Excuse me, conditional use, yes.
Okay.
So Scott, I have a question for you on the 24/7 professional staff. Yes. If the licensing requirements don't require... If the licensing that they get doesn't require that, you still want that to be done? Because they're... They're supposed to get, um, accreditation from these two different agencies. If they wouldn't require that and just security staff is okay, do you still want...
I don't know which it would be either... Either way. I mean, I... I don't know whether the state licensing would incorporate that or not.
That's my question.
I don't know.
If they don't, would you still want it anyway?
I would like somebody there 24/7 that is of a professional level, not just, uh... I don't want to say less than professional. You know what I mean. It's, uh, something in therapist, something in nurse practitioner, something in... Something in a... In a level in case something needs to happen on a... On a more immediate basis, yes.
Mr. Wolf, question for you. Uh, you mentioned, uh... We mentioned here the, uh, joint commission accreditation for addiction treatment, JCAHO, and the joint commission accreditation for rehab facility, CARF. Those two organizations are, uh, I think incorporate a lot of the things we're talking about.
They... They do.
Into their requirements. Is that correct?
You would require the facility to be licensed. Uh, the facility has to be licensed.
Obviously. Oh, we understand that part.
Right.
So those... Those recommend... Requirements, uh, are a lot of them are incorporated into the licensing requirements. And what about these accreditation, uh, agencies?
Yes, they have to... They have to be... Have those... In fact, I think they already have them. They, uh... But they... They are required to have certain accreditations in order to be licensed.
Right.
Ron, I think there was another, uh, part of the motion to approve the curative amendment you didn't mention, I believe, was that, uh, all the coordinated activities and...
Well, yeah, that's... That's part of the curative amendment, so they can't change that. I mean, they have to have 25 acres, and in fact, I'm not sure what the 25 acres are. That's not a be left-handed comment. It may be a condition saying that you have to go file for subdivision to chop off these 25 acres so we know where they are. So they can't change that. They can't change the fact that they have more than 60, uh, patients or individuals, and they can't change the fact that all treatment has to be onsite. That's part of the amendment. That's... That's not part of this conditional use. They have to show they can comply with those conditions.
I don't think you mentioned it when you... When you, uh, introduced...
Okay.
It's typical, actually, the 25 acres was actually part of the land under the curative amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Provided, Robin, that also added it in as... As a provision, but that was incorporated into my client's original curative amendment, so... That wasn't a... An add-on or some 25 acres. That's something that was the property owner, uh, had included.
I mean, it'll have to be delineated in some fashion.
Sure, ac... Actually, the... The figure that has been used throughout, uh, this process for the application has been 40 acres. They're looking to utilize 40 acres of, uh, of that property. So they were meeting that requirement already. So they were... They were intending initially before the curative amendment came through to, uh, perhaps about 40 acres of the property used for, uh, for the treatment.
Forty out of the whole.
If I understand correctly, it was 40 acres.
Right, at least 25 was the minimum they had to be set aside out of the parcel.
25 was... Was included for use, uh, upon the curative amendment so that it wasn't open-ended, uh, being that this is an R1, so... Robert, I see you've joined us. Do you have anything to add to this?
No, I remember, uh, all those original recommendations, and I agree with your additions.
Okay. Alright. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Can I just add, the one... The one piece that I had said in my writing that I'm still concerned about is, um, the road and the driveway, um, and clearly understanding responsibilities for each. I think it's... It's really important, and I don't know whether that... I... I feel like it has to happen. Maybe it's... It's not a specific condition, but it's a recommendation to the board of supervisors as before that they approved this conditional use that the, um... That road, it... It is clearly, uh, identified as to where the property begins, where the township road ownership begins, responsibilities, right-of-way's. It needs to be... Should be on the... Maybe it should be on the map. Um, but I think it's been missing, and I think there's some liability issues there, especially if you have any sort of increased... Well, we're not supposed to have increased traffic, but, um, more scrutiny, I think it needs to be looked at.
I gotta address that. And it was a year ago, I know, so I wouldn't fault anyone for not recalling this, but there was some considerable discussion about that. In fact, we had investigated it with Township Roadmaster, uh, and it's... That section of Mountain Road is...
Give it a break up.
I'm sorry, essentially has been a, uh, an orphaned road from Smithfield Township standpoint. Uh, it obviously originates in Delaware Water Gap Borough, ends, uh, Delaware Water Gap maintains that portion of it. Uh, my understanding from talking to the roadmaster is that Smithfield does not maintain the portion of the road beyond the Delaware Water Gap portion. Uh, it doesn't go anywhere other than to, uh, to this property. It's not a through road. It doesn't continue on beyond that. Property owner has maintained it beyond the area where Delaware Water Gap maintains it, uh, traditionally.
So I... I understand that's what we've been doing. I just... I... From... I mean, Ron, I don't know if you want to chime in here. I don't know whether that excuses us from liability on that road, um, just because we have... The township hasn't been doing it. Um, I... I just... I just think it... To have a... I'd say the roadmaster has said it's been orphaned for us. Is that a legal... A legal out? Ron, can you help me out here?
Unfortunately, I don't know whether that road's a dedicated road or not. Uh, and without knowing whether it's a dedicated road, whether to the borough or to the township, it's a little difficult for me to answer that. But let me say that you are the planning commission. You, gentlemen, are the planners of the township, and if you believe that a condition should be something dealing with that road, then that's your condition. The applicant may not like it, the objectors may not like it, but that's your condition. So if that's what you want to put on this and the other commissioners agree, you can.
Well, my one... My one thing is that if there is going to be a gate, and that gate is over a Smithfield Township road, um, where we... If we don't... Technically, legally, still have responsibility, I think there's an issue there, and whether that means that the condition is that the... The supervisors formally succeed that or release that tiny stretch of the road, um, I just... I... I don't know how to state that, but I think my recommendation to the board of supervisors is that they look at that issue carefully before approving a conditional use.
Alright, how... How about we come at it... How about we come at it from this way? Because it's entirely possible that nobody will ever know whether or not that board... That road is public or not. It's probably been there since they put that, uh... Since they put the, uh... The golf course in before World War I. So it might well be that the... That what you're asking about, Michael, the condition might be that the applicant and Smithfield Township would need to enter into an agreement, absolving the township from any responsibility and maintenance for the road, comma, if any. That's probably what you're asking for.
Correct.
Yeah. I think that... Let's come at it from the other way.
Well, there is a comment in there that has them to delineate who owns the land.
Yeah, and there's a traffic study.
Because it was... Well, not the traffic study, but who... It was unclear who actually owns the land.
Yeah.
Because there was two different maps showing boundary lines.
Well, that's in here, too.
Yeah, that's in the comments, yeah.
One of them, yeah.
Right, but I think that... I think that's... I think that could easily be added as a condition that the... That the township and applicant enter into an agreement regarding the maintenance of that road, that it be the applicant's.
Uh, I'd also like to make a comment, um, with regard to this list.
Mm-hmm.
There's, uh, one of the later items, "Any future expansions of the facility, either by way of acreage, buildings, or number of beds, will need further township approval, etc." Uh, I think we could strike that, because aren't we pretty much saying 60 beds?
60 beds is in the statute.
It's in the statute, so that's a sort of a redundant...
Yeah.
Uh, item. We probably could take it out.
Well, not... Not with respect to buildings or acreage, because that would still be trimming.
That's why I said it.
Okay. Alright, so we'd add... So with Michael's addition, that would be the fifth new one that I... That we would add.
Okay, and how do you want to refer to that?
What, the road agreement? That's just what I... Just what I had said to, uh, to Ron.
And you got that, Ron?
That the applicant and the... Yeah.
Applicant and township entered into an agreement to release township from any liability regarding maintenance of the road.
Yes. Yeah, that's... Let's come at it from that way.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Mr. Moore, I'll wait till you're done with your discussion.
You wait till I'm done drawing a breath before I was gonna ask, is there anything else we need to add? Okay, go ahead, Pete.
Uh, this relates to one of your conditions.
Yeah.
I think it's quite relevant, and I think it's something you can take administrative notice of. That's the understandable condition that the facility obtained within six months state licenses and maintain those licenses in good standing.
I think that's on here already, isn't it?
That's correct, but in fact, I've got a copy from Mr. Wolf. I'm sure he probably has it from Mr. Karasek, and I'll ask for supervision to give the rest of the planning commission. In fact, there was an inspection done.
Okay.
First of the Plaza Road in East Strausberg location that this facility did get a license for in the spring. That's in East Strausberg, so that's a different report. There was an inspection report.
Alright, Pete.
My question is here, because this... This, what you just handed me, Mr. Leonard, relates to PA Nice Homes LLC. Um, it's not the applicant, not for the facility that we're talking about here. This is for the facility on Independence Road.
That's not quite true.
Pete, we're here on... We're here on conditions on a conditional use. We're not... We're not here to litigate the rest of this thing. The supervisors get to do all that in 10 minutes.
Let me finish, Scott.
Alright.
The October 8th letter is a warning letter warning PA Nice Homes DBA Water Gap Wellness to discontinue and refrain from operation of an unlicensed substance abuse disorder treatment facility at 288 Mountain Road, Delaware Water Gap.
Okay, that's between them and the state, then?
Well, but it raises the issue as to whether the applicant is operating in good faith and in good standing. I think that's relevant for the planning.
I'm not sure I have it as old as the planning commission.
It's not. It's not actually relevant for the planning commission. Because we're going to... Because we will make our recommendation for the... For the conditions on this conditional use, and the supervisors will enact whatever they believe either are good, bad, or different from the list plus their own, and then any of the other enforcement comes thereafter, being...
Well, it's... It is relevant to the zoning, but it's not relevant to the planning commission, correct?
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Except it might be, because one of the conditions could be not only that they obtain their license, but they demonstrate they are no longer operating in violation.
Well, they can't operate... They can't operate without a good standing license, Pete. I mean, they can't.
They couldn't.
Mr. Moore is correct. These... These facilities have to be licensed. Uh, Water Gap location is not licensed currently. Uh, this letter relates to PA Nice Homes, which is operating the Independence Road facility.
This letter relates, and states it relates, to the facility at 288 Mountain Road.
It's... It's addressed to PA Nice Homes LLC, which is operating a treatment facility, an outpatient treatment facility, uh, under Independence.
And the inspection report relates to that, the warning letter relates to this facility.
And that's just exactly...
And that's just exactly the kind of thing that this, that our condition about licensing speaks, yeah, correct. Our condition about licensing says, and the supervisors will no doubt take good consideration of it, that the facility must be licensed and furthermore, that it should be accredited by these two agencies, that these two authorities that accredit.
And in view of this inspection and this report, you could strengthen that by requiring that P A Nice Homes have corrected the conditions at the other location and-
I don't see how we could possibly-
We don't have the authority.
Authority to go beyond state licensure.
It would be a recommendation.
It's, it's-
It's in there.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not, okay, we're moving on.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're moving on. All right, I see we have, we have many other members of the public here who've been, who have been involved with this.
And we also have Attorney Anders of Fiso, if he has any comment.
Oh, I didn't see Marshall there, there you are, okay.
I have some, some questions and some comments when we're ready.
Go ahead, because the supervisors are hitting in ten minutes.
All right, and your, your conditions here, the first rule of point is preliminary screening and background checks of proposed residents for violent sexual abuse crimes. Is that another way of saying that, that individuals who are accused of violent or sexual abuse crimes have committed them or not to be admitted into the facility? Because we think that should be a condition.
Well, our condition says what it is, yeah, you got to screen.
What says they, it says they're screening, it's background checks, but it doesn't say that they're prohibited from entering the facility.
I agree with you.
I agree as well, I noticed that as well.
Yeah, I think that was the intent, certainly, maybe we should add that.
Okay. Thank you, the next rule of point is residents, residents of the facility is voluntary and not court mandated, and my, my question is the same, does that mean that court mandated individuals should not be admitted into the facility, that they should not accept court mandated individuals?
Yeah, the admission to this place should be on a, on an individual voluntary basis.
Okay.
Whether it helps them if they have a court case is one thing, but they're not court ordered to go there.
So if somebody has a court order saying have to go there-
No, 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 they can't go there.
And they don't agree to go, then that, that's not, those people should not be admitted.
They don't get a court order that way, because they're, usually if they're gonna have it, it's going to be while they're waiting for trial and their case to be resolved and they go into a rehab. That's not, that's not saying at the back end they get sentenced to a rehab, not the same thing.
Yeah, so I'm still not sure what the, what the condition means then.
That they don't get sent, that they can't get sentenced to it, that's what it is.
So we need to elaborate on that comment.
If, if that's what the intent is, maybe that's what we should say, that people-
It says court order.
To go there.
It says court order.
What's the definition of that?
A court order that says you go there, that's what it says.
How would you like to see it written?
Well, Scott just said, people can't be sentenced, there'd be, a court cannot sentence as far as the last day that you have to go to the Water Gap Borough.
If you would want that condition, Mr. Ferrari, and it says residents-
You left them in?
Residents at the facility is voluntary and not court mandated, if it would say not court mandated sentencing, does that solve the issue?
That would be clear.
Okay. All right, may not solve the issue, but it would be clearer at least.
So just, you're gonna just change that, Ron?
You would just put sentencing after court mandated, that's all.
Okay.
That's an easy enough thing.
With respect to the, the next rule of point with regard to security, it's my client's position is that the, the facility should be secure with a fence surrounding the facility where these activities are conducted, we'd ask you to consider making that a condition as well.
I think that was part of-
Yeah, it probably wasn't clear enough, but yes, that's what I said in my number two, fencing and twenty-four hour security.
What's, what, what kind of a fence, a picket fence?
With barbed wire?
Um.
That's the fence we talked about.
The type of fence that somebody can't, fence when he jumps over it or a slap fan, somebody goes through the openings, there'd have to be some kind of secure fence that people, prevents people from getting in and out of the property, other than the gates.
But if it's voluntary, what, what, what does that matter? I mean, they can leave anytime they want.
The concern of my client, you weren't privy to all the testimony we had here, but there's, there's a fear that people are gonna leave that facility, wonder about the neighborhood, I mean, the neighborhood is immediately adjacent to this.
Right.
They're doing detox, they're, they're doing, they have people that are heroin addicts, you know, oxycodin addicts, whatever, and those people are being moved into the community when they leave, and a fence deters that.
There was also a terrible testimony as to security measures and the protocols which would be in place if this were a licensed residential facility, in other words, there is no unsupervised activity that people are not free to be outside on their own.
Okay, I'm, I'm willing to let the supervisors handle it, to be honest with you, I've made my recommendation, I think.
Well, your, your, your recommendation does talk about fencing.
It does.
I think that-
Is that a big perimeter recommendation, is the perimeter would be best?
I'd say perimeter probably is a better way to say it.
And maybe the perimeter fence, and maybe the way to modify that would be to, you know, to say the type of fence, the type of nature of the fence, of the fencing would be up to the supervisors.
Okay.
I can do that, unless you want to commission a study.
No, I'm not commissioning studies.
If I had a rest, I'd say perimeter, fencing is fine, but I think supervisors have to discuss the man, and also discuss it, it's up to the local residents.
Well, we can make the, well, we can put the recommendation, you guys can do whatever you want then.
Agreed.
Okay, all right.
My clients would also like you to consider a condition that the residents or patients would not leave the grounds of the facility unless they were accompanied by a staff member. And the genesis of that, that, you know, we're gonna have potentially testimony if you hear, there have been instances where people have left and they've caused problems in the community.
They've, they've left it in as opposed to a residential treatment center, but-
Wow.
I, I think it's already included in the record that residents, while they're at the facility, are supervised, they're not allowed to be outside the facility, by facility, I mean outside the building, leave them alone.
Not true.
Not true.
Stop.
Just to make it clear, it's easy just to say that a individual that leaves the facility has to be accompanied by a staff person.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, Jim, I'm not necessarily inclined to say that without hearing more from here, I'm more inclined to leave, to leave my recommendation in, whoa, leave my recommendation in place and then you can take that up with the supervisors, I don't want to get in the, I don't want to get in the weeds of, of their licensing and how they have to, and how they have to do it, all right?
I don't agree with this.
Okay.
Finally, we would like to have a provision that if somebody does leave, that they be against medical advice or against advice of their staff, the Delaware Water Gap police be those, like.
Why?
Because there have been instances in the community where people have gone out and have caused problems.
Are you, are you, are you anticipating a crime?
We're very sure it's a crime based upon the nature of the people that are there in the close proximity of the residents, yes. We have evidence that people have left and wandered around in the community. There, there recently was a case where somebody left and they attempted to kill themselves in somebody's property.
Okay, but still, I don't-
It's possible that the police be notified when somebody leaves against advice, that they know that there's somebody in the community and they grasp and, or again, something pretty bad happened.
You want to transmit to the police their, their medical information?
No, to say we have somebody that left against medical advice, we don't know where they're at, they, they left it, you know, ten years ago.
Jim, Jim, I, I'm sympathetic with you, but I don't see that happen, being able to be put in something that's a, a condition that we can add.
It's a little bit of a thing too.
Okay.
All right. I have nothing else.
Okay. All right.
There may be folks here that have, the residents in the community that want to have input on that.
Let's do this, because the supervisors are gonna need to get started, I don't want to do anything that is going to, to duplicate anything you wish to the members of the community, pardon me, that is going to duplicate that which you may wish to say to the supervisors here when they start their, when they start their supervisors meeting. You've heard the conditions and the adjustments here from, from two thousand nineteen and the additional ones today. Are there any members of the public that want to say something? All right, well, sir, if you would, hang on, I can't hear. Because we have to get your name, just hang on one second, what is your name, sir?
Peter Walton Timey.
Okay.
I was mayor of Delaware Water Gap from two thousand, oh, I'm sorry, from two thousand to two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
Destroying his comment on the police department. In the borough, gentlemen, the police department reports directly to the mayor.
Mm-hmm.
I'm the person he's talking about, who's the person coming on my property.
Okay.
I think it's viable that the people that came after that person never identified themselves as the ruling war. I wanted to call the police and the state police showed up and then our police showed up. So I think it should be a requirement that if you're going to provide security and someone leaves the ground, the local police department should be notified of the need.
Scott, maybe a slight change, you're already-
Is that Michael or Ron, which one?
It's, it's Michael and I just, as a, as a thought, as a, we're already in our recommendations mentioning twenty-four hour, seven days a week security. Maybe there can, maybe there just can be an addition that says twenty-four hour, seven day security that is coordinated with the local and state police on any, around any potential threats to the community or something to that effect, I mean.
I don't, I don't think we can actually do that, I, I actually don't, I think it's just, if it's a nine one one situation, that's what it is, I, I don't think we can put it as a zoning condition, Michael.
Yeah, the, the people are there voluntarily and if they leave, that's not a violation of the law.
I didn't say anything about leaving, I'm, I, because I agree with that, you can't, if someone chooses to leave, there's no legal issue there, all I'm saying is if you're requiring security, then all you say is that that security is, is coordinating appropriately with local police, with local police, that's all I'm saying.
Well, unfortunately, right, local-
Right, if, if there's a, if there's a reason, not just because I decided to go home.
Correct, correct, or I decided to leave, I mean, that's the thing, we can't control, if it's a voluntary place, if someone wants to leave, they're allowed to leave.
Absolutely.
I, I don't, I, I don't think we can do that. I'm not comfortable doing that as part of a recommendation. All right. Okay?
Mr. Moore, this is Marshall Anders, can you hear me?
Who is it?
It's Marshall Anders, hello.
Oh, hello, Marshall.
This is kind of a follow-up to everything and you may not think this is an appropriate condition, however, I do based on some other conditional uses I've been involved in, where if these people leave the wellness center and are unaccompanied and commit a crime, that should, should be a basis for the revocation of the conditional use. Or they commit, or there is five instances where people that are housed there are off-site and commit a crime.
I'm actually not comfortable with that.
Well, can that even be done though?
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if it can be done, I understand what Marshall is saying and perhaps, and you should be aware that Middle Smithfield Township had a very similar case back in two thousand and twelve where they placed a private drug and alcohol treatment center in a pre-existing project, I don't remember what the pre-existing project was.
Hillside.
Hillside, but one of the conditions was that if someone was gonna leave the premises, that they must be accompanied by someone from the program and then brought to a safe location of some type, now, whether that is something the supervisors want to do, that is something that was put in Middle Smithfield and that may then solve this issue with respect to someone leaving the premises and then committing a crime, which obviously Delaware wants.
I mean, there could be, there could be, I mean, obviously if someone is picked up there, that seems appropriate, but I imagine we could do a conditional, a, a condition that says that if someone wants to leave and doesn't have transportation to leave, that they could, that the facility is required to transport them to the nearest public transportation location, which is actually three minutes down the road at the, at the Mart's bus. That seems like it could be a reasonable condition as well, because if they're, the concern is there's pedestrian traffic of certain people that might be on drugs, that would significantly limit that, I don't know if that's, you know, that's just a thought.
Many of the things you've been discussing are in the two thousand and twelve additional use of Middle Smithfield that I believe for myself, I mean, several of, cover a lot of this are exactly what you're discussing now, so I think reasonable.
Okay. Agreed.
I mean, I mean honestly saying that if someone is, because of its relative remoteness and the lack of public transportation that is available right there, that might be, I, I think that's a reasonable condition to say that if someone is planning to leave the facility permanently on foot and check out, that the facility is required to, to get them to the closest public transportation. I mean, that might be a question of paying for a taxi to get them to Mart's bus, I don't, you know, something to that effect.
I don't even know how we do that. Well, you, again, it's been discussed, if you want to make it a condition, you can, if not, if you believe as shared that this matter has been discussed and there's no further comment either by attorneys or the members of the public, then you need to entertain a motion to, I would assume, recommend approval of this project with the conditions as outlined in the November sixth, two thousand and nineteen planning minutes, plus the five additional conditions that were mentioned this evening.
Couple of them get edited.
And, and with a couple of the edits.
Yeah, with the edits edited.
And Ron, if I want, if I want to make a motion to add that additional condition, do I do it now or at the end?
Let's do it after we do the first one, then, you can do it next then, okay?
Okay.
All right. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that, that Ron said it better than I did, for the, that, that we adopt the conditions on November sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
As edited today.
With the edits, thank you, yes, with the edits, together with the five additional conditions from today, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty, with, with the various edits. There is. And that this- May, may clear, because this may be going further, obviously, but the edits that I have are that the residents who are checked for violent or sexual abuse crimes will not be submitted, will not be admitted to the facility. Yes, that's to exclude, yes. That residents at the facility is voluntary and not court mandated sentencing. Yes. And that the security comment that- The fencing. Uh, you made would be fencing and I believe- I said perimeter. You recommended perimeter. Perimeter is what I recommended, yes.
And twenty, twenty-four hours.
Yeah, the twenty-four hour seven, yes. Yeah, the, the other items that I have here, just so we're clear, patients stay, cannot exceed sixty consecutive days. Yes. Perimeter fencing and security twenty-four seven, that there be onsite treatment by professional staff twenty-four seven, that all treatments for residents are inpatient, no outpatient treatment will be permitted, and that the township and the applicant entered to an agreement to release the township from any liability regarding the maintenance and use of, what's the name of the road?
Ma- Mountain?
Mountain Road, yes.
Mountain Road, yes.
Those were the additional ones that were added today in addition to the, the modifications that I talked about for the court mandated sentencing, et cetera. All right, I make that motion. Any seconds?
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Scriber? Any additional comments or discussion, gentlemen?
Yeah, Scott, for the twenty-four hour overnight professional, would that be acceptable, someone who has a degree in psychology or sociology?
Yeah, yeah, something that would be likely like that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's what I mean, yes, that's what I mean. All right, seconded, uh, on favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to make an motion to.
And now, Mike, Michael?
I'd like to make a motion to add an additional, a, a, to recommend an additional condition, um, let me try to get this right, that we recommend that one of the conditions is that if there is any patient that is, um, permanently leaving the facility that does not have, uh, uh, a form of transportation, um, that the facility is required to, uh, how do I say this, to?
Transport?
Well, either transport or to arrange transportation for said individual to the closest, um, available public transportation location.
What if we said it, what if you said it this way, Michael, patients, patients would not be allowed to, uh, leave the facility on foot? Then they'd have to be driven somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's, I don't know what the rules are in terms of if someone's there voluntarily and they wanna go to the, you know, walk down to the Sycamore to have lunch, I have no idea how that works.
Okay.
If, if, if that's something that's allowed, if you're there voluntarily and you're, you know, wanna go have lunch somewhere, I, I don't know whether we can control that, I'm just saying if someone's leaving the facility, um, and you don't want them wandering the streets of Delaware Water Gap, that, I mean, that, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and you said if they're leaving permanently, so that's a little different.
And it already says that, I mean, we already have as a requirement that, um, they must be, um, uh, they must be with someone anytime they leave, leave the facility sort of temporarily, right, that's already in there? So I'm talking about at the end. And if, I don't know if you, if someone doesn't feel comfortable with that, but has an alternative suggestion, that was, that's my attempted motion there.
Okay, is that a motion? Yeah, we'll give it a, we'll, we'll see if he gives a motion, any second?
I'll second that, too.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Yep, anymore? No. All right, all in favor of Mr., sorry, Mr. Alvera's motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, I say nay. Good.
Yeah, I, I, I see a difference if they've completed the program and are leaving, or if after a week they're saying, I don't want, I don't like this, I'm just getting out of here.
Okay.
I mean, if they've completed it, yeah, oh, well.
All right, so I think then.
It's felt suspended.
It is, I think then our work is done. All right, I'm, uh, I, I, I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second it.
Yes.
I'm, I'm Danny Goss.
Yes.
Two, three, six, three, down the road, down in their water gap, someone like property, it's Smithville Township. And I, I'd like to discuss some conditions for the drug rehab center located at the former Water Gap country property. And, uh, you don't have to write these down, I got them all ready for you, I'll give you a copy of them if you want.
Yeah, and that, uh, suits yourself, I could, the supervisor.
Um, one condition, no additional construction permitted, the entire property now or in the future. There's a certain size, no enlargement, that size right there. Condition number two, current in and out buildings may not be altered in a vertical or horizontal fashion, but expand or enlarge the space to accommodate additional patients.
Let's come, we've done that.
Great. Entire property must be maintained, be in, the original pro shop, the ground surrounding the end. All eighteen holes of the golf course, not seventeen, and then seem like borderline harassment to some of the neighbors. All grass should be cut regularly in the growing season. Anytime we have down trees, they should be removed from the property. Repair or remove all existing fences on the property. And I bring that up from the standpoint that, again, on borderline harassment. Our property owners on the seventeenth fairway, they had fences made of plastic. They had rolled up fence, wired, colored, would protect maybe your garden from the deer or something like that. Not, they also have steel poles in the ground, much like those, uh, metal poles that you put snow fences up or used to in dealing with that, and, and the, uh, breaking on the fairway. Would also say that there's a white split rail fence just above the Cherry Valley Road, on Conscamp Road. You prove that, how about the green, uh, thin white fence?
Danny, I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to have to ask that we stop at this point. You will have an opportunity to bring all these up to the supervisors, which come over right after us, but we, but we've made our recommendations on the conditional uses for the curative, for the curative amendments, many of which it sounds like have incorporated some of those themes that you already have in there.
Yes.
You know, such, such as fencing and so forth, so, um, at this point, I'm gonna have to say that, that our planning commission meeting is gonna be closed, because the supervisors are gonna take over the desk and they're gonna, and the next part of the hearing, again, which will be on, which will be on the record and all, will, will come right after we're done here, so that you'll have your opportunity to tell the supervisors those concerns, I think they, I think they hear you. Okay? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We are concluded.
All right, and a motion to adjourn in a second.
In a second, all, all in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks.
Just so everybody on the current feed knows, I'm gonna switch over to the supervisor's Zoom link, and that's also on our Facebook and website, but, uh, we advertised with that one, so I have to change it.
We have to change this thing.
Changing?
Zoom, like.
Why, is it a different site?
Yeah.